All three of the ladies, please. The allegiance is to the flying of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please have a seat. If you have a cellphone, please make sure it's on vibrate or silent.
Karlovic, Kramer, Rechner, Reese, Ister.
All right, I have a proclamation for National Bullying Prevention Month. Whereas more than 3.2 million children in the United States are victims of bullying each year, with 71% of students reporting incidents of bullying as a problem at their school. And whereas bullying is physical, verbal, sexual, emotional, or intentional intimidation directed at a person or group. And whereas targets of bullying are more likely to acquire physical, emotional, and learning problems. And whereas bullying occurs in all neighborhoods, playgrounds, schools, and through technology such as the internet and cellphones. And whereas we must acknowledge the need for continuing education and awareness, which remains vital, to help end bullying among all people. And now therefore, be it resolved that I, Kurt Karlovic, being Mayor of the City of Sunbury, County of Northumberland, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, on behalf of the City of Sunbury Council members and citizens, do hereby declare the month of October 2018 as National Bullying Prevention Month. And make a motion to accept this proclamation.
Second.
Ister?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, please.
And now, we have a representative here that's going to speak to us about the Shiklemy After School Program.
Yeah, fine.
Yes.
We just want to give a thank you, of course, to the Mayor and the council members and everyone for being here. The program director of our Shiklemy After School Programs couldn't be here today for previous commitments, but we wanted to explain briefly what it is that we do, who we are. We work with the school district, but we work through a federal brand. This allows us to serve kids ages three, from grades three to eight. We basically run a program after the schools for two and a half hours, where this year until now, up to now, 270 students are able to attend. Over the years, over 400, only last year, over 500 students were able to be in the school in the time of the day where juvenile crime is pretty big, pretty, the rate is pretty high. So we give them a heaven where they can further their academic experience, where they can get their hands on things that otherwise they have no chance of learning. We have organizations that come from outside and help us with maybe technology trainings, anything in STEAM, if you don't know what STEAM is, that is science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. They get reading time, they get healthy meals provided by the central Pennsylvania Food Bank. These happen for two hours, two and a half hours to three hours a day, Monday, Thursdays. We work 180 days of the year and 40 days during the summer. They also get to do some phys ed, they get group activities. They get, in brief, they get a lot of stuff that is not provided by any other kind of education that they get. At the same time, we offer throughout the year, at least four, and try to go over, trainings for parents and adults, so if you're an adult and you are looking for something to get out of, to learn, or something new, welcome you if you have something that you can provide to other adults that you think would be enriching to the community. We are always hearing offers, we always want to expand our community in that regard. And I think pretty much that's it, that's what we do. We have four elementary programs, one in the middle school, and we also provide the high school with creative recovery courses so the kids can graduate when they are supposed to and they will have to extend their years.
Thank you, thank you. So now, I have a proclamation for the Shiklemy After School Program. Whereas the citizens of the Shiklemy School District and the City of Sunbury stand firmly committed to quality after-school programs and opportunities because they provide safe, challenging, and engaging learning experiences that help children develop social, emotional, physical, and academic skills. And whereas the Shiklemy After School Program has provided significant leadership and community involvement in the education and well-being of our youth, grounded in the principle that quality after-school programs are key to helping our children become successful adults. And whereas Lights On After School, the national celebration of after-school programs held this year on October 25th promotes the importance of quality after-school programs in the lives of children, families, and communities. And whereas more than 28 million children in the U.S. have parents who work outside of the home, and 15.1 million children have no place to go after school. And whereas many after-school programs across the country are facing funding shortfalls so severe that they are being forced to close their doors and turn off their lights. And now therefore, be it resolved that I, Kurt Karlovic, being Mayor of the City of Sunbury, County of Northumberland, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, on behalf of the City of Sunbury Council members and citizens, do hereby enthusiastically endorse the Shiklemy After School Program. I make this into a motion to accept the proclamation.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister? Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Thanks so much for, thank you. All right, at this time, is there any audience comment on agenda items bullying at this time?
Um, solicitor, please.
Yes.
Chester Street update?
Yes, today we had the falling concrete sidewalks, a curtain was installed last week. The lights, I think, were down to five lights, are being installed tomorrow. We're on the home stretch, planning some feed jets, some rest, a little bit of topsoil work. And Wednesday at nine o'clock, we had the first round inspection from Penda. So we are getting closer, and after the meeting Wednesday, I'll know when the peeling is scheduled to begin in Chester Street.
All right, solicitor, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Tonight and at this meeting is set as the time and place for the second reading of an ordinance vacating two unnamed alleys running through real property, property, sorry, currently owned by Bimbo Bakeries. That ordinance is number 2018-145-49. And as stated at an earlier meeting, basically, we are taking care of a municipal duty which was previously voted on many years ago by city council. However, the vacation provision of that vote was never fully realized. Therefore, tonight we are asking that the, tonight is the second, or the time and place for the second reading of the ordinance to vacate the two alleys running through Bimbo Bakery's property, both of which lie completely within the confines of Bimbo Bakery, and neither which, neither of which is currently in use by any other public or other entity. That's it.
So make this into a motion to accept the second reading.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
So, the police SOP revisions, following. In order to just update our SOP procedures within the police department, there's a few revisions that we've worked with, with the Sunbury Police Union and ourselves. And I'm making a motion to accept these changes.
Second.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Due to our short manpower within the Sunbury Police Department and for safety concerns for the city and our officers themselves, I make a mo, um, oops, way too far. All right. Officer Joshua Dreisbach has six years full-time law enforcement experience and is currently one of our part-time officers. I make a motion to hire on a non-permanent status Officer Dreisbach at a pay scale of patrolling one, under our emergency civil service clause. He will remain full-time with benefits until a new civil service list is completed, at which time, in order to be hired on as a permanent full-time, he must take and pass her civil service testing with the other candidates. I make this into a motion to accept this hiring.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
All right, with our city administrator position, we have received numerous applications, and there are three candidates that we've interviewed. I make a motion that we begin employment negotiations with these three candidates for the position of city administrator.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Councilwoman Kramer, on the debt level.
It's a general obligation note from the bank. Every year, we end up getting a tax anticipation note of 250,000 at the beginning of the year. And this is what that would be.
No, excuse me, I speak back now.
Yeah.
We went out, we got an unfunded debt about three or four weeks ago. And after we decided to look at it, to a little deeper, talk to DCD, and Joe and I spoke, the bank is willing to give us a general obligation note so we don't have to go through DCD and don't have to borrow 500,000. We only want to take 250,000 out for the rest of the year to get through to where we're at, and then at the beginning of the year, take our TAN note out. This loan basically would be about a three-year note, or possibly a five, if we run into trouble without paying it back. We got a little better interest rate on it, and it's a short-term loan, which I think would be better for the city of Sunbury. Had to discussion with the bankers and also with Joe and I, just spoke, once a price of call. So that's, I'm sorry, I thought you were going to fill me in on that.
And I'll back up Kevin by just saying that the basic premise is, instead of borrowing 500,000 dollars at a higher interest rate, we're borrowing 250,000 dollars at a lower interest rate for a shorter term. But it's much easier and quicker for us to obtain this money as well. Nobody's going to have to pay me to go to court and get it approved because this is a legal way to obtain the debt without going through the unfunded loan process. And after we were, became aware of this through the bank, unfortunately, it was after we'd already voted to do the 500,000 dollar unfunded debt process, and I had begun that process, the bank contacted us and said, hey, wait, you don't have to do this, we have this new product available, or we have this product available. And after speaking with Kevin, I agreed that it was the perfect solution to our problem in that it will save us money, time, and it provides the amount we need without the necessity of spending a whole lot of money to get it.
We're not very much in debt for the city of Sunbury compared to everybody else in the area. We're only borrowing about 170,000 with the land and the construction note, which that goes down to 50 in January. So the bank said, hey, why are you doing this? You know, you have good credit, you don't have much debt. This would probably be a better way to proceed. That's another reason why we looked at this avenue.
How do we do the bids, so we can meet each bid?
There's only two bids, one from Swinford, one from Northern National. So we have given Joe and Joel a side with Charlie, would be better overall, the fees and the interest rates.
One's from Northumberland National, one's from Fulton, which used to be Swinford. And they have to be gone over by you to make sure that they're both for the same.
But some has a little higher fees, one's accepting interest rates.
We don't have to vote on this to decide we do it.
Yeah, you would have to vote for him to let him proceed, so we don't issue money.
Have to approval by the citizens.
What were the rates?
The rates are a fixed rate of 3.8 for Fulton and a 3.95 for Northumberland National.
For the first three years.
For the first three years, yes. And repayment would be, in Northern National, repayment would be five principal payments of 50,000. The, I don't see definite repayment. Yeah, it's a five-year term from Fulton, it's a five-year term without the necessity of set payments or scheduled payments. Yeah, both, both of them are obviously well-known in respected financial institutions in the area.
You're only both fixed?
Yes, you're both fixed. One, as I said, Fulton is 3.8, the Northumberland National is 3.95. And since, let me just look at the term. The, there's a bank fee of 300 dollars on Northumberland National, and let me look at the fees on this one. No, there's no fees except that the borough, or actually the city, they said the borough, shall pay all fees and expenses of council, the solicitor, and financial advisor, and shall pay for the preparation and printing of the note documents, but I knew that, so that's not a problem at all. The bank fee for Northumberland National, as I said, is 300 dollars plus all costs of transaction, including any incurred by the bank. So very simply, I can tell you at this time that the Fulton Bank would be the preferred.
Do you want us to build a proposal forward on it?
Yeah, I think we should because right now we're really getting down.
I mean, it's a lower interest rate, it's a longer term, it's, there's no fees. I mean, it's kind of a.
We had one, we had a TAN note that was about three years ago.
Yeah, we'll just make a motion to give you authorization to review and to proceed with Fulton, I think we're going to do, actually.
Yeah, we can say we're proceeding that way, we can do it.
Make the formal motion.
Second.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Kramer?
Will you pay invoices?
I'd like to make a motion to pay the invoices with a general fund of 135,622.77 and from the liquidity budget, 2,097.23.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
In class four, we scouted we had a total of about 155,000, 157,000. Like, we try to save another 10,000 off that next month, again, you guys did a great job, appreciate it.
Um, we have had a police officer resign from the Sunbury Police Force. Officer Keith Keifer Bathgate turned his resignation effective October 12th of this year, 2018. We have had, we have received Officer Bathgate's resignation dated October 12th. He resigned of his own accord, and his resignation has nothing to do with a council member or a council member's family. A copy of his resignation is available at the city clerk's office. Make a motion to accept his resignation.
Second.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
The next city council meeting is November 12th, 2018, at 6:15 p.m. in this room. At this time, is there, are there any audience comment?
I just have a quick question about the, the money.
Please stand approach the podium.
I'm sorry, I just, I was under the impression.
Please come to the podium.
It's a simple question, I'm sorry, Robert Snyder, City of Sunbury. You were saying before, I thought at the last meeting, that it seemed like the debt was more severe. Has something changed that now we only need 250? I understand the 500 was cautionary.
About we were going to borrow 500, but then we wanted to offer a TAN note next year, we're just going to carry that over, so we had 250, 250.
So do you anticipate we're going to have to borrow more money?
For this year?
For this year?
We're going to borrow from the TAN note that we have existing now, because it's a really good rate. And then we'll take this money that we borrowed here and pay back that TAN note.
Okay, so there are two separate notes that you're actually going to draw from then.
Well, right now, we're both borrowing from one that we took out back at the beginning of January.
Right.
That we always did, remember?
Yeah, sure.
And it's good to do December 31st, but we got a really good rate on that for the one-year loan, and we always do from, you know, from the banks. So we're borrowing that money, so we pay a little interest rate to you on December 31st, and we bring that and pay it over. Then we'll take the TAN note.
So it is 500 basically now. All right, you borrow the 250. 250.
We'll borrow 250 now, we'll borrow 250 like we do every year from January to March.
So 250 and 250. Still 500.
No, but you look at it a lot, the 250 is a shortfall.
Right.
The TAN note for next year, which we done when you were here.
Yeah.
Not the changes there.
Okay.
But the shortfall is 250.
If we care, if we watch your spending, Bob, and all that, we should be able to get through.
Should be able to, great.
We should, we should.
I just, a little confused.
Yeah, we have a shortfall, like I said, we have 155,000, 157,000 bills, we're using our 210. So if we do that for another two months, a little lower, a little lower would be better.
Yeah, okay, thank you, thank you.
Please stand approach the podium.
My name is Peggy Valenti. I'm going to speak on the meeting that you had prior to this, I just would like to make some comments. I've lived here most of my life, and I don't understand everything that you're talking about, caused making people pay fines. I do know that we need to fill the buildings down this town. But before we can do that, I think we need to clean up downtown. Have you walked up and down the street and seen the filthy windows? The streets, the sidewalks, the stores that are even occupied, they don't even sweep their sidewalks. If you look up above and see the apartments, there's rags hanging in the window, towels, sheets. How can we expect someone to come into this town and want to rent anything when the town itself looks terrible? I'm ashamed of it. I cannot believe how dirty it is. We, we just don't have pride anymore. What happened to the pride of the people that own the buildings? They don't take care of it. I mean, even some of the ones, all the ones that are there, I bet those windows haven't been washed for three years. I actually stopped in and talked to one customer. I said to him, I'm just interested in cleaning up the downtown, how would you like to see things done? And I said, when's the last time you washed your windows? And he said, and who are you? And I said, just a concerned citizen. And he said, twice a year, and the kids do it the year, the time when they clean, the Christmas, otherwise he doesn't. I said, why? He had no answer. Do you ever side, you know, sweep your sidewalk? No. And we went outside and looked up, there was an old towel hanging at one window, and I said, he said, they're tenants, I can't make them, put curtains in the window. I said, why can't we? I mean, why wouldn't you want your tenant to make your building look presentable? And, and I just think before we can start making people put for sale signs in the window or anything like that, we need to get people interested in this town and clean it up. And then I think we can move forward. But you've got to clean the town up, I'm ashamed of it, it's a shame. You go to other towns and walk around, they're clean, they're all nice.
Um, I just had a couple comments about the thing that should be started out in the meeting. I, I do think that maybe not putting, you know, some of the things Chris said, Councilwoman Reese said earlier, were, were, you know, okay points, especially about like putting a bloody emergency contact and that information being there. But I did have kind of the for sale sign thing that you're talking about. Now, I know you own a business, and, you know, I, I own a business. And when you, anybody knows that when you have a business, you utilize every resource possible to sell your business, to sell yourself and your business. And you do that, you have your face on your truck, you know what I mean? Like, you use every valid resource you have, that people notice you, they notice your brand, they notice your business. And that's, to me, the same type of thing. If you really want to sell your property, you're going to utilize all of your resources. I utilize all of my resources, I send out mailers, I use Facebook, I, you know, I've used the newspaper before for things. And, you know, I, I print things up at my, my studio and my windows, Halloween parade, I walk around, I hand out flyers to people, I mean, you want to do anything, you know, anything is possible. And to me, that's, you know, that's one of those things, you're going to put a for sale sign in if you really want people interested. As far as people are going to know that that property is vacant, people are already going to know, the property is vacant, you can see in the windows. You know what I mean? Like, it's not going to make, but they're going to know, hey, that property is not just vacant, but that property is actually, you know, for sale or for rent. I've had, I've had friends who are interested in certain properties, and they ask me, hey, do you know who owns this building? And I always say, well, you know, most of them have a number on them. You know, as far as, you know, putting all the other contact information on, if it is for, if the building is for sale, it has the, you know, the rental property information, and you would call that anyway if you were at that, have the information. But my, my second comment is, everybody keeps saying about the manpower for the code office and like not having the resources to do that. But I was under the impression that it isn't the code office, extra responsibility for the code office, but it was responsibility for the property owners to, to do that. Like, I know when I moved my business into a building, I had to go into the code office, I had to pay 108 dollars, I had to fill out a paper. Then I get a phone number that I'm responsible for calling and setting up an appointment for a third party to come in and inspect the property for me to get occupancy permits. So wouldn't it work generally the same way? Like, you have a property owner, when they go in, they can call a third party? Like, I was under the impression that that's kind of how, how that would work. Like, the responsibility would be on the property owners, not on the code office.
The occupancy permit is totally different.
Oh, no, no, I know, but I'm saying the general idea is the same thing. When you have a third party come out and inspect the property.
That has not been discussed in this room, it's about bringing a third party in. So right now, it's.
But if it hasn't been discussed, that would be an easy solution for the code office not to need extra manpower, wouldn't it?
Well, they're not going to come in for nothing and do it.
No, but the property owner, just like I had to pay, you know, for the permit, the property owner could pay for it.
Yeah, that's a possibility, but I mean, if this.
I mean, that seems like an easy, no-brainer solution to me, not to have the code office to have more, more work, I mean, more manpower. I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't difficult for me to do it, it took five minutes out of my, my day to go in, fill out the paper, write out the check, and call a number. But I'm just putting it out there, I think, that that would be an easy solution to the needing more manpower thing.
Thank you, thank you. Any other comments tonight?
Hi, Ron Perner. I, uh, I want to talk to you about a 160 parcel. Let me back up here a little bit. I want to talk to you about a 165 million dollar business that operates, some of its facilities in the city of Sunbury. Last year, at the end of 2017, like I said, they had 165. Last year, at the end of two thousand seventeen, like I said, they had a hundred and sixty-five, a hundred and sixty-five million dollars in revenue, with twenty-five million dollars in assets. The place is known as Keystone. Twelve seventy-three Highland Avenue is considered a single property dwelling. In this single property dwelling, you have twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, paid employees. These are employees. This is not a single property dwelling. This is part of a lucrative business. They call it an organization. In your articles, in residential districts, businesses are not allowed. And this is definitely a business. With this, you have what is called off-street parking for hospitals, playgrounds, and other facilities. They have their off-street parking. It was taken care of at city council. They refused to use it. I was here before. Mr. Shipman took care of this situation before. Things are getting that bad on Ridge, Highland, and Race Street with the parking. There are slashed tires, there are keyed cars, there are notes left on vehicles. I spoke with Mr. Wellman, who is the president of Keystone in Harrisburg, one twenty-four Pine Street, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. I invited the fellow from Keystone here to the meeting tonight, so there wasn't anything that wasn't, you know, said about him. His name is Mr. Nathan Gerhart. For some reason, all of a sudden, he decided, well, I don't have to be there. This is not a, the facility at twelve seventy-three Highland is an intellectual disability. We, everybody in here has some kind of intellectual disability, I assure you. I can tell by what's going on at the meeting. I have video, I respect by not having my phone on, but then I heard that I could have had it on by break. I have videos of these individuals that want the street department putting a handicap sign up, running from the vehicles to the house. Nobody can be in the house that has handicap ability, that are handicapped. It is not handicap accessible. It's not. It can't be. But this is what they want. They swap parking, they put a car out front. When they leave, they bring another one in. They would put a handicap placard in, pull that vehicle out, put the handicap placard in that. I had a handicap placard before I gave my kids the house because of a bad leg. And I'm telling you, they are awful to the people up there. This has got to get addressed. Somebody's going to get hurt, and I'm serious about that mystery.
So I'm kind of getting at both sides. I got a letter from my guy today, and I talked to him about it. I thought we took care of part of it by getting rid of that one handicap stall last week. Is there still an issue beyond that?
Still an issue beyond that.
So where is the, so we?
The same thing. The exact same thing.
Where are we at now?
Same thing, same place.
Same spot?
Same spot.
But it's not a handicap spot?
They will park, they will park three vehicles there and not utilize their three-car private carport.
Okay, so it's not so much that they were using the handicap, now they're using all the parking?
Now they're using all of it.
And they're using it business hours?
Mr. Ger, absolutely. Mr. Gerhart's select, solution to the problem was, "Well, I'll just park one vehicle there, and then I'll park another one up on Race Street, and I'll park another one on Ridge Avenue. I don't have to park anything in my private carport." It's nothing but creating animus. And it's got to get taken care of.
John, back in the day, you addressed the same situation years ago. When they got, and we might have the files down there, when they asked for permission to put that in up there years ago, parking was the issue. And you do have three stalls up back there, the employees refuse to use them. That's the issue, they're not using them. So, John, you addressed the issue back in the day also.
They were told that they hadn't used them.
Exactly.
And they just, they're done and not doing it again? And they used them for a while? Was there a period that they were using them?
They were using it for a while after Mr. Ship, Mr. Shipman went up, everything was fine.
Okay.
And now it's started again.
Okay. Well, I just got the letter today from.
Now, I'll tell you what, people don't like their tires slashed. There's police reports, people don't like their cars keyed. And I really don't like it being designated a single dwelling when it's not. It's nowhere near a single dwelling. It is part of a very lucrative, I'm calling it a business, they call it organization slash corporation.
How is, like, United Way, how are they, because they just moved into a residential spot in the city as well? The same kind of thing, where it's a, it's a house? How are they, are they zoning the same way, or are they?
United Way is neighborhood business.
Seven, two, three?
On Art Street.
Yeah, yeah, so it's the same kind of, it's not a single family?
No, I don't, it's, I think his is residential where he's talking.
I am talking.
And the other one is neighborhood business.
Kevin, is that R one or R two? Oh, I don't know. I live there, and I don't have no sense.
I don't want to give you any false answers now.
I wish so, it was R one, to be honest with you.
I don't know where I, where I was supposed to look in, I'll go from where I can.
Can I ask you a question, sir?
Sure.
How many employees, do you know how many employees they have at there at any one time?
Oh, they have anywhere from three to five.
And that's twenty-four seven, you said?
Twenty-four seven. Their breakdown on how we spend our program money is seventy-two percent employee. So you're not going to tell me that it's not a business. You're not telling me it's not a business.
Do you know how many residents there are in it?
Now they're saying there's three, then there's two, there were five. All it is, I know what it is myself. I think Mr. Trupaw would be looking into some of it. Because I have all the figures, the facts and the figures in my phone. And I was literally shocked when I seen what comes in. And you're not getting any of it.
Yeah, probably all we're getting is their local service tax.
They're under a five oh one C three tax. They're exempt.
That's, that's better.
And I'm going to tell you what, with what they're bringing in per.
I think the House Speaker is the president.
They are clients slash patients. The Hilton doesn't get that kind of money.
Do you have this contact info?
For Ross.
Yeah. Can I, for what I can do as far as the parking side, can I get with you sometime?
Absolutely. If somebody gives me an email address, I'll send you stuff they don't believe.
I'll speak with you and look at what you got.
I can do that too. This has got to get taken care of. Not just on Highland Avenue. Not just on Highland Avenue.
Well, I also have to talk to them too, on the parking side. Because I'm, I'm in here one, and I got my foot to go from there. And probably with you, we get all your stuff, and I have a letter that I can be able to go through from there, look at the parking. At least, if they're not using it off-street, making it use it off-street, that's a starting spot.
It's a bad situation. I'm going to leave council know right now, before I walk away from here. I got a forty-year-old granddaughter who's afraid to come back out on her porch now because of these people yelling and screaming at her. The patient and her boyfriend. This is why I'm here tonight. I am at my wit's end. Some people know me, they know I have a short fuse. I'm trying to do it the right way. Touch my granddaughter, burzal the bag. That's all I got from you guys.
Thank you.
Any other comments tonight?
We train our muscle, elected Democratic committee woman for Ward Two. I'd like to make some comments about tonight's meeting, and I'm very happy that the council, Mr. Mayor, and the council have come together to discuss the matters of continuing to keep the city beautiful. I think we all know that nothing is perfect. Everything is learned through trial and error. If you truly want to keep the city and make the city stay active on behalf of residents of Sunbury who are afraid to come and speak their opinions, I ask this council to set aside any egos, political parties, and personal differences to move this city forward. If a teacher gives a class a test, and the majority of the class fails that test, the teacher did not effectively communicate the lessons to that class, and the class has to go over those lessons and be retested. I don't feel that everyone on the council, as well as the public, understands what is trying to be done with vacant properties in this city. There's a book of ordinances, and I think we all know that they are selectively enforced. They're not always enforced as they should be. We have a misuse of authority. We have amendments that have been done to many of these ordinances. So to pass one tonight or tomorrow, there's no problem in coming back and amending it until you get it perfect. Many of the buildings or properties could be renovated and turned into apartments for veterans. There are programs going around the city in which the government will give grants so that the city can fix these buildings up and make these apartments available for veterans. Over and over again, I listen to this council remind us that we are a third-class city. Harrisburg is a third-class city. The city recently is a model for successfully turning, well, let's say, they let investors come in, buy vacant buildings, turn them into apartments, and those apartments are now housing veterans in the city. They also help to give those veterans jobs, because they can give them the jobs to maintain that building. Buildings have, it's self-sufficient. The buildings have a cleaners in it, they might have a grocery store in it. So they're able to have jobs in those buildings. I've lived here for twelve years, and twelve years is a little too long to have vacant properties sitting around here, and no one's doing anything with them. I agree, it's nice that you can maintain it, cut the grass, wash the windows, whatever, but certainly, three years should be enough that anybody's property is vacant. We have every other township, borough, city around Sunbury, they're flourishing. They have new houses, they have new buildings, new grocery stores, new restaurants. We have the best view of that river. That river is a selling point. In real estate, they say, location, location, location. Sunbury is the location. People should be knocking down the doors, coming to work with the mayor and this council to bring business into this city. And I, I can tell you, I have, I felt resistant when they said to me, "You have to bring your, you have to come to the code office, and you have to let us know emergency contact." I was resistant at first, but then if I'm out of town and something happens to my property when I'm gone, I will be very happy that the code office, the police department, the fire department has someone that they can contact to make an executive decision for me. Regarding windows, people were putting up sheets and towels and album covers and newspapers in the windows. It is up to the property manager or the homeowner to put in that lease the guidelines for how they want their property to look when it is rented by a tenant. So there's no excuse for this city to be looking like some war zone. In closing, I would just like to say that I'd like, I've referenced a couple of things, and I still find that there has not been anything done. You got the property on Third and Penn, which I understand is owned by the fire department, and maybe that's why you don't do anything, because you get your votes from these people that are in these fire departments. But the grass is mile high. No one enforces them cutting that grass or cleaning up. You've received numerous phone calls from the homeowner, because he calls me and asks me to come and say things, and I tell him, well, they're not going to listen to me. So I don't know why anything's not being done to that property. And I have to ask, on the corner of Third and Court, there is a building that is boarded up, but yet there are tenants living in the units thirteen through twenty-three on the lower floor that look like they are in disrepair. And I don't understand how tenants can live in a building with six stories, and all of them are boarded except the lower level. We need a council with fresh eyes on the prize, and Sunbury is the prize. And I ask you all to please revisit any ordinances that other cities have put into effect, and it's working for the other cities. If you are sincere about helping us, all the residents and yourselves, I ask you and I urge you, please revisit other ordinances. I will be happy to email you an ordinance that works in other cities. Sunbury's not the only one, Harrisburg's not the only one. Philadelphia's now striving, Pittsburgh is striving. There's other cities all around us that have ordinances in place to do this. Let's just, I understand you want to protect a lot of the people here who are in this special club, and it's nepotism or whatever. Let's knock that out of the park. Let's all just get together and work together. Thank you for listening.
I just have a couple questions. I'm trying to understand why someone who, and I don't know, was it you, Rick, that said somebody or Jimmy, why somebody, why would somebody want to let a building sit for years but not want to put anything on it to advertise it? I don't understand the point of that. Like, that was one of your, you know, we can't tell them what to do. Why would somebody want to sit on an empty building and do nothing with it? What would be the point of that? Why wouldn't they want to advertise it if they're truly wanting to rent it or sell it?
I can ask, I brought that up. I can speak to it. My point was that for them to get the waiver, they would have to show some kind of advertising. If they don't want to advertise at all, and they don't want to do anything, then they pay the fee, and they go through the process. If they get the waiver though, and they're advertising online or advertising it wherever, at least they're advertising it. If their personal feeling is that, they don't want to sign up because they don't want to alert burglars, they don't want people to know. I feel like personally that that's not up for us to say, "Your opinion's wrong, the burglars are going to know it's vacant anyways, put a sign up." That's just where I stand on that personally. So I do agree that they shouldn't be advertising. If they really want to sell it, they want to get the waiver, then they should do something. But I don't think it should have to be a sign.
But doesn't it, I mean, an empty building is an empty building. People are seeing it's empty. Isn't that more of a, of a lightbulb moment for a criminal to come and come and rob it than see a for sale sign in there?
We don't know that.
I mean, to me, I mean, that would make more sense to me.
Like, that's where I'm at, where it's just that personal perception.
Right.
If that's your feeling, and you think that that for sale sign makes them a victim of my property, then somebody should do it. That's why I think that. As long as you're showing that you're doing something, that you're advocating somehow, that's good. That's just my.
All right, I just, yeah, I was just curious. Rick, this is for you. I was wondering when the last time the code was updated in its computer system and the procedures in the office?
Well, the code is updated. The International Property Maintenance Code is adopted as soon as there's a change in it. Right now, we're using twenty fifteen. Prior to, I think, last year was twenty twelve. As far as procedures in the office, I'm not sure what you mean.
Like, is everything updated with the computer system? Are you guys having a problem with the computer system?
The computer system, none of the computer system is actually updated. The second, third, fourth generation computers is what we got.
So you're saying, as a order for you to move forward, would you like to keys an ordinance of this type? You would need a new computer system?
No, 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 no. The manpower, I mean, the way it was explained when we sat down and talked before that, we were going to go out and we were going to hit the streets, look for these vacant properties, do this, do that, do this. And I made the suggestion about getting a third party involved, but it never, never got any further than that.
In a meeting I had with your code officials that you missed out on, that we scheduled, council, the code officials actually recommended a third-party inspection, and I agreed with them. And we've been talking about the third-party inspection for the property.
And we've been talking about the third-party inspection for the properties.
They're not, I mean, if that's the case, what they haven't been talked to about the process. In that case, they do the inspections, we don't. In that case, they have the guidelines, we don't.
Okay. And, um, the other thing I noticed too is that, I mean, it's obvious that you and Jimmy are both kind of against the ordinance, and we get that, but I would like to see you contribute something other than, "No, we're not for it." I'd like to see you bring up some kind of compromise maybe to the amending the ordinance instead of this.
Never said I was against the ordinance.
Well, that, okay, I'm sorry, I wanted to reclarify that. That's how it appears to me, and, uh...
Well, Doug, first of all, modernizing the computer system, which you just mentioned, I think should be the first thing. When I can get a driver's license from a registration of my vehicle online, paid for, shipped into me, why can't we do that in the office?
I was, okay, so if the computers are three years old and it's been a while since we've updated our computer system, why is it just now that we're discussing this, and why hasn't it been updated prior to this? And right now, we're all upset because there's nothing in the budget for it. That's what I don't understand.
No, Doug, you missed it. It's been discussed for years and years, and it's been like...
It's never been financial...
There was upgrades done in 2016, right? 2016. So, but now...
The upgrades in 2016 gave us new servers with the old brains. So we need the new brains to work with the new servers. That's why I recommended to put in the budget for next year to update all of our computers.
So you are putting it in the budget. Is this something everybody would be agreeing on, or be agreeing with? Or is this just something that we're gonna throw out there and everybody's gonna deny?
Well, we have a budget meeting here next Monday night.
Is that open to the public?
Oh, yeah.
And that's at what time?
It's two o'clock.
Um, and my last question is, is because it seems that Mr. Kralowicz, Mayor Kralowicz, did bring it up about other cities and saying that this ordinance worked for them, is it possible that we could bring in some of these people from, um, like, other ministers from other towns to help us out? And tell us, "Hey, look, this is how it's worked for us." And then if you have a grievance or a problem, they could better communicate to you other than Kurt communicating it to you, how or why it is in the place that it's in for the ordinance, for us to move forward. Because it just seems like we're not able to move forward, really, with this ordinance.
I'm not sure who Kurt talked to, but by the same token, I can make a phone call too. I don't know who he spoke to.
Well, instead of calling, why don't we call some people and have them, that, that you spoke to and say, "Hey, is there any way you can come represent your ideas to our city council to kind of give an idea of how this works and how it's been good for you? And kind of help them figure out, you know, some of their negatives and explain to them why it's not really as big of a deal?"
You know what's the furor of where they're at, let's drive there.
Well, hey, I think it's a great idea. Just make, make a move.
Well, we have to find out where they're at.
You know, everything can't wait till next year. I mean, we gotta wake up today and get it done, get moving, do it.
Yeah, the only thing I guess we'll say with that is just bring it over and over that ours is different. It's not, it's not a cookie cutter. It's not a coffee.
Right, right.
So I guess that's where I've kind of, yes, I wanna get the input of the other cities and I've looked.
Well, I gotta tell you, I do appreciate, and I think that I did see that, you know, you might not agree with what was going on, but you at least came up with another solution. And when you do that, you set precedence for everybody else in the community to say, "Hey, listen, you know, you might not agree with us, but let's try and work together." Because you're our leaders.
But Doug, if you enact this, but don't follow up on it, what's the sense? That's why I think the system should be updated in the code office, so we're ready to handle this in the future and make it more simple for the residents or the property owners in the city of Sunbury.
So you're not really against this ordinance?
No, not at all.
You just need to know that we have the manpower to handle it. Is that what you're saying?
And it's gotta be enforceable.
Right. There's no sense of passing something.
And we can enforce it because our computers aren't updating because we don't have the manpower.
There's multiple things. Um, and it's just, this is just, I don't wanna get into a long discussion here. If, if we have three different, three different sections in our code that addresses vacant properties, they better all be precisely the same, same words and everything that might correct.
Can you bring that to the next meeting so that y'all can collectively talk about those together?
I think we know it. We've lost so many cases because we're going by one ordinance, the IMPC, whatever, and the guy said, "Well," the person said, "Well, this ordinance says this." And it could be just a word or two difference, so it's going out. There has to be consistency across the board.
Do you have those ordinances with you today, those three different texts? Well, that's the difference.
They're in the book.
You're saying they're free, and they're in the book. But you're talking about an ordinance that we're trying to approve or we're trying to move forward, and you didn't bring the last three with you. I don't understand how you can compare it.
And you don't understand what I'm saying. I'm just using that as, as a thing. We have, like, I brought up the last meeting. Our ordinance book has fines of a hundred dollars, three hundred dollars, five hundred dollars, and a thousand dollars. A summary of that, and we were told this by the judge, cannot be more than three hundred dollars. So all of our, all of our subpoenas or all of our citations say one to three hundred dollars.
I think it was great that you brought it up, because he read away, said, "Okay, three hundred dollars." There was no argument. It was like, it was at least one step forward.
But, okay, but there, there's so many different things in the code book. It has to be completely revamped, is what it has to be.
Bring that code book up next week so you're prepared and we can get it and move forward maybe.
Well, no, I went for, I went to sit here and go through every, every ordinance with you at a council meeting.
So how are you, how are you gonna get the ordinance? How are you guys gonna work collectively to move forward if you don't wanna bring the information that may be contradictory to the ordinance that we wanna propose?
Well, if you wanna come in the office, we'll show you where, where there's different things. And I'm not just talking this one. I'm talking multiple ones. The book's gotta be consistent upon.
But that's your job. You're the code officer. You should know this.
It might be my job, but I gotta get the money to get it, and I haven't gotten the money in five years to get it done.
Doug, can I say something?
Yes, please.
The, the problem with the city ordinances, okay, is that a lot of them were legal when they were written, and the laws have changed. You're looking at ordinances that go back to the 60s that were written by this council and that council and this solicitor and that solicitor. And it's a hodgepodge, okay? What Rick's talking about as far as losing court cases, I was involved in a couple of them before I was a solicitor for the city of Sunbury, and I utilized the city of Sunbury's ordinances to beat the city of Sunbury, quite honestly, because different ordinances said different things.
Right.
So what I'm saying is, I've already spoken with council about updating our ordinances. I should have time. It's gonna take a lawyer to do it, quite honestly, to ensure that everything is, I mean, not to ensure that everything's the same, but to ensure that it's all legal at this point. But quite honestly, I haven't had time yet, and I'm trying to spend my time most valuably for the city. And there have been other things. Now hopefully, as of January, I'm gonna have time and the council's going to allow me, give me the grace to go forward with going through every stinking ordinance and making sure they all match.
And updating.
And updating all.
And does that cost the city money when we have to update them?
Well, it costs the city money. No, it only costs the city to pay me to do it.
Well, we don't have to pay fees, do we?
Well, and when you file the certification, yeah.
We don't have to pay fees. That's what I, that's what I...
Yes, yes.
That's what you're talking about, isn't that what it is?
That's, and, and what I'm saying is...
Well, I need that understanding, and that's why I asked.
Well, and that's why I jumped in. Because quite honestly, I want everybody to understand that it's nobody sitting here is necessarily their fault. And it's not anybody's fault from before, because it was probably legal when it was written. But these laws change every year. You know what I mean? There's stuff changing all the time. And just like the fines, you used to be able to do a five hundred dollar fine. You used to be able to do a thousand dollar fine, I'm sure, at one point or whatever. But today, it's three hundred dollars, so we have to change that stuff. And, you know, it's gonna take some time and it's gonna be done, and I absolutely agree with you. But I think everybody here is with you on that, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
I got a great idea for everybody. And both sides, or all sides, or part of the side, everybody will agree. I've been coming here. It's driving me crazy. We all want the same thing. We want the city to move forward and get better. We, do we all agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. Instead of spending so much time on ordinance and everything, why don't we try something really innovative? Next July, let's start planning now. Next July, we have two weekends. We open the city up for investors, businesses, residents. We have, we have tents in the park. Every property owner that wants to sale or lease their property will have coffee, tea. Realtors there will have, uh, someone that can sign contractors. You wanna make a deal on the spot or a lease. And that way, the ones that have time to fix their property up, look nicer, and try to achieve a new tenant or a new business. So we have, "Come see sunny Sunbury in July," okay? That's a good time. The weather's nice. So everybody can clean up their property adequately. The ones that have more means can fix it up a little better than the ones that don't. But they can still index their windows, sweep their sidewalks, trim the tree in front, and say, "For these two weeks, if you wanna rent or sell your property, you have your sign out." We go on the city website. We put all the properties listed, if the people want it on there. Not, not ones that don't, but people that actually wanna make a move, cash in on their property. And we make it a friendly, positive atmosphere. So everybody, like, say, the month before, we get volunteers, we go around, we weed all the sidewalks. I used to hire kids on our street on Saturday for five bucks to help me weed from Forest Street to Front Street. And the neighborhood kids would help me. At the end, we'd go get an ice cream, and they were all out there. Took us like forty minutes, me and three kids in the neighborhood. Okay, so two things happen. The kids like it nicer. It's a friendly day. They're adult supervising. We need to index windows. Maybe the person who has the worst windows is sixty-eight or seventy-eight or eighty and disabled. Maybe that one week before, we put together Citywide Volunteer Week. Put in an hour, put in five hours. Everybody that says they want the city to do good, they can throw in their hour or five hours. Contractors, everyone. So first, the newspaper sees people cleaning stuff, kids picking weeds. We're mowing the gardens. We're getting the garbage out. We're getting rid of tires. And then everyone in the community that's fighting everybody, all they can do is say, "Quiet fight, because all you gotta do is walk out your front door and clean up around your place. Pick up the cans, pick up the wrappers." And then we're not, we're not, we're all, if we're all for the same cause of benefit in the city. I think it's an easy way. I think you guys should say, "Two weekends in July, that's plenty of time." No one will be mad at anyone, because if they don't like it, they won't volunteer. But if the mass of people turn out and clean up the city and do it, and we have a street party after it's over in the evening, and have a band in the gazebo, it's fine. But then, it's no pressure. See, there's no pressure. We're gonna have, we're gonna put ads in Lewisburg, Bloomsburg, Seelings Road, and say, "Open house, city of Sunbury, properties for lease, properties for sale, residential's for lease, investment opportunities." And that gives every owner of a property time to make a brochure or price, an opportunity, and there's no pressure. I mean, I think that's an easy way, instead of being, we're, like, I mean, I don't really wanna come here all the time and argue. I hate it, okay? I don't like it. But this way, it's all volunteer. If the whole city gets behind it, nobody's saying, "You gotta pay this. I'm making it hard for you." It's, "Buddy, come out for five hours and help the city." Everybody wins. So I suggest that we go on a simple formula. Volunteer, show off, showcase the city. That way, nobody's being offended, nobody's getting pushed. The guy that puts the most effort out, makes his place look the best, will most likely be the first to be leased, rented, or sold. But you don't have, I'm writing you up. I'm writing them up, see? And then the ones that fall behind, that don't do anything, you'll, you'll start noticing. Some blocks will turn around and go, "Wow, this is a nice street. Look, all the weeds are gone, the sidewalks are swept." And they'll go, "There's a house for sale right there on this street. Look, the neighbors took pride in it." Which is the same thing she was saying, but not forced. Because you gotta wanna achieve something. You gotta wanna be great, because if you don't want that, you're not gonna get there anyway. So that's a new way, instead of fighting the ordinance and going back and forth, is if we try that, July's not that far away. And everybody can be positive, because you only have to do what you wanna do. But if you get a mass of people, there's like nine thousand eight hundred residents, if you get half of them, and, and like kids that, that help pick up trash and garbage and walk with their parents, say, "Just do two houses to each side of you." All of a sudden, the whole place will be nice. So I mean, this is a new approach on an approach that's getting a lot of anguish from both sides. So I suggest to the mayor, if it's, if you like the idea, it's strictly volunteer, but we can build on it. You know, watch our community clean up, come up with a catchy thing, and then start getting it out there.
These exist already.
Huh?
These exist. They already happen. I mean, SRI does, we've done downtown to the outside, put it out, taken out.
But, but, but my point is not that. The good, the good part is, you run the ads in all the cities, "Open house."
Yeah, and we do it online, yeah.
Huh? No, but it could be online. It could be anywhere.
I see what you're saying. I get the idea. I mean, it'd just be nice, you know, we have a lot of people that say those things, but we don't see them when we do those pets outside.
Well, you have, if, if you're as persistent as he is on this, if he's as persistent on that, I'm sure it will be well-received and, and a good accomplishment.
Mr. Walbert, when we have to advertise around the country, because no one in...
Advertisers everywhere.
Yeah, no one in the local area wants to come to Sunbury. They call it Scumberry, and I'm not very proud of that. I don't know why.
Well, can I tell you this? I have clients from China, from England.
Bring them, because I know they got a lot of...
No, I, I, no, but my, just hear me out. I, I pick up guys at the Harrisburg Airport that fly in from China. I get them in New York. They come here. They love it.
I've seen you. I've seen you at your conference meetings, so I...
And the price, no, but and the price is so reasonable when they compare it. But my point is, you gotta start somewhere, okay?
It's a great idea.
What? Well, first of all...
All right, thank you for your comment.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you, Walter.
I'm done.
Amy Buehler, Sunbury. Part of my appearance wasn't planned while I'm talking tonight. Just a couple of comments I wanted to make. I will echo what Chris says and the reason that I decided to come up even though I wasn't going to. I chair SRI's Business and Economic Development Committee. We did a sandwich stroll in May, I think it was, May or June. Really great turnout. We had a lot of people from around here that don't normally come out and participate. There was great participation. We had a cleanup day the day before, which was much less participation. But there was volunteers. There were walkers down Market Street helping clean up the storefronts. We just, um, launched our new biz pitch competition, which is actually being revamped to be called a, um, Business Assist Grant. Grant or assistance, financial assistance. Applications, new businesses or existing businesses. We're doing a match on physical improvements. If you wanna wash the windows, uh, lots of information. You can get it online. You can stop me, or my number's pretty easy to find. You can call me and talk to me. I'm all for it. Let's get 'em all cleaned up. The one other thing that I will say is this, and, and I had talked to Mayor Kralowicz a, a little bit previously. Echoing Chris's comments earlier, signs don't necessarily sell commercial buildings. Your investors are looking online. We're making connections with them, both from SRI, from the city, from the county. As real estate agents, we're reaching out to these people and trying to get them to come in and participate and invest and help us clean up the community. There's a lot of great things about this ordinance that'll help. Everybody here is absolutely right. We've gotta work together. There's a reason that local people don't wanna come around, but I will tell you, I've worked with a gentleman who is from Doylestown, who has a building here in town. I have another one that's from out of town. We have people that wanna come here and believe in this city. And if we don't soon, we're act together and do it from within. We are our own worst enemy right here in this room and in the city limits, and we've gotta get it together. We really have to. And I would love to help with anybody's ideas and get together, participate, figure out what we need to do with the ordinance, and figure out what we need to do with washing windows, sweeping leaves, and making this town look beautiful and have pride in it again. All of us, we drive.
Hi, Tammy Kimpen. Um, I really don't have any complaints going on. I just want to echo, I've only been in business, it'll be a year next month, and the actual people that reside in Sunbury... people that reside in Sunbury are amazing. I've seen people that are mentally challenged, that literally will walk up and down the street. If they see garbage on the sidewalk, they will pick it up, they will throw it away. So to say that people that live here don't have pride, they do. And just, as far as this ordinance, if we would just, we don't need to wait till it gets past. If everybody would just take five minutes out of their day just to do something nice, whether it is you see dirty windows, or ask if you can just get someone next to clean them. Because they could be old, they could be disabled, maybe they just can't do it. Instead of just bashing everybody and bullying, just help, that's all we need to do, and then we all can work together and make this place look better. I personally chose this town to open my business. I could've went anywhere. In fact, I had a business owner come to Lewisburg into my cafe, and she saw my cafe, and she's like, you would do amazing in Lewisburg. And I was like, but I chose Sunbury. This is the heart, and this is what needs a little sunshine spread around, and then it just, it's a ripple effect. So that's all I ask, is that we all just work together and just volunteer any way we can.
Sure.
Everyone keeps talking about the windows. One, there's a guy who walks around town who will wash your windows for $5 all the time, every day with his stuff. If you're concerned about the windows, hire him, he will wash it. Besides that guy who will wash your windows, there was also a guy who owns a business in Sunbury who cleaned the windows. He did my windows, he charged me $20, and, you know, I removed all the stuff from the windows. So there's actually a business in Sunbury that does that. I wish I could remember the name of his business off the top, but all I did was Google it real quick. So if that's a, if that's a big issue, you can hire him, or you can find that guy walking around all the time, he'll take your $5 for a couple views and wash your windows, and he does a great job. I think it's worth it, so I just wanted to put that out there, that, that everybody seems to be concerned about the windows, it's our people's duty, so.
My name is Dennis Schaefer, I'm a property owner. I've been a part of the community for fifty-four years within Sunbury, so I've seen a lot of the same things Peggy that you're talking about and so forth from there. And I do agree, there are people here that do have pride in the community. I also agree that there's some opportunities with that. As a local business manager for a number of years, very involved in retail, had several businesses down here, what I think we need to connect with first is I think we need to get, first off, somebody talked about reputation of Sunbury. Reputation of Sunbury, I do believe, has been soured for a period of time. When we're talking about volunteerism, my family has volunteered on countless, countless committees, myself as well, my wife, my children, to try and better the community. I do understand a lot of the property owners that are here, in fact, I know several of them, I've seen a number of them invest hundreds of thousands of dollars more in properties than what they're actually valued at. They could not turn around and sell these properties for the amount of money that they've invested into these properties to try and do that. My concern is that as a business manager, I have approached the city, I've approached the council, in fact, I've approached two members of the city council currently, years ago, to come in as a manager to offer free product, free landscaping, free labor. If you can understand, I never received a return call back. So I've come to council meetings, my family's come to council meetings, the next day, I have code officers at my properties. Okay? With miscellaneous things, and I've even heard from city employees that there are issues within that. One of the sightings was because I had pigeons that were on the roof. Okay? The next day. This is what I think we need to get fixed with this community. I see that the council needs to work together. I'm glad that we're going in a lot of different directions and we're trying to make things happen, but there still appears to me that there's a lot of dissension amongst this group, and it needs to be fixed. I'm very sad to see, I know that Terry is leaving shortly at the end of this year, you're losing a lot of experience with that, you gotta find a way to overcome that. Joel, very happy to see that he's part of now the council, I think a lot of good things can come from that. But from the outset, from what I'm seeing, you're still not working together as a group. To get this city moving forward, you're all gonna be in one direction, the volunteers can come in with that, you know, and we need to make those things happen, but we can't have selective ordinance, as somebody's talking, being, you know, brought about, where this particular person, you know, we bypass, but on another occasion, this is somebody we're gonna target or we're gonna go after from that. I think there's a number of people that have experienced that. However, the ordinance that we're talking about out there right now, and I don't have all the particulars from, from what it is, but from what I understand, it still has a way to go before it, it makes sense. You have to understand that when you have a property in there, I've purchased properties within the town, a number of them, I've restored them, I've put a lot of money, a lot of time, a lot of effort back into those properties. However, what I'm seeing is, I, I have one that I bought a few years ago on the street, it was the worst house on the street at the time. We started investing in that property, we started trying to bring that property back, you know what, at this point, it's no longer the worst house on the street, but I've got situations where there are countless, somebody was here a few council meetings ago, talking about the crime that's directly across the street from that. Has it been addressed? No. There's city employees that live along that street. Okay, when I see them boarding up the front of their house across the Victorian gingerbread with scraps and closing it in, I'm wondering, you know, what, what we're looking at from there? When I drive down Forest Street and I see some of the properties that I know are rentals, and we're looking at the properties where they used to be, from my standpoint, growing up in the city, they were, they were beautiful properties, but we've taken out the brick and we've replaced it with cinder block, half, I, I won't even say the word that I'm, that I'm thinking there, they look horrible. So the impression coming into town, we've gotta be able to fix those things and talk about those things and get with those property owners. You can't expect somebody to be fixing up another property and making it, you know, putting thousands of dollars more than what it's actually valued at, when we're not working with the other properties that are around that, we're allowing those to continue to go down. We have to do something else with the ordinances at that point, we have to be out there, we cannot be selective, and we've gotta make sure that we're hitting every property that's out there at the same time. But we can't allow it to go backwards any more than what it is. It does not, at all for me, being somebody who's investing and been investing in the community for years, it doesn't pay me to fix up my property when the neighbor down the street, since the time I've owned the property, those property values are going back down based on the things that they're doing, and it's being allowed. So those are the things that have to change, to me, is have people invest, and I agree with what Mark was saying, regards, so there are people outside who will invest, with being a, set a manager for a long period of time, I have friends in Cincinnati, Ohio, love this area. They love the, the price of the real estate, they love, you know, culture and so forth around, they're not willing, I've taken them through Sunbury, through a number of buildings there. They're not willing to invest right now in the way the building is, or the way the buildings are down there, they need to be fixed up. And we need some type of committee on business and economic development, as being a, I know that we have one, but are we looking at the businesses and are we talking to people that have actually run businesses? I've run businesses in excess of $60 million with multiple hundred, you know, employees for years. Okay? However, there's opportunities out there, but they're not gonna come in right now, not the way that the city has been run, the way the city is being structured, until you guys get together and start making things happen out there, and that needs, collectively as a group, so.
Very good, thank you.
I just wanna say one thing. I showed up here two hours ago with all these people here, and I was really disappointed, because I kinda thought that this meeting was gonna be for landlords and people that own properties to talk and say something, and we're being told we couldn't say a word. I thought there was supposed to be a meeting of everybody for landlords or people to do that ordinance, we're supposed to have a meeting. Myself, plus a whole bunch of other people that showed up here at 5:30, thought that this was gonna be it. And we were shut down. So I think the ordinance has got some good things to it. I do. It just needs to be worked out, and everybody needs to work together. You guys aren't seeming to work together, so maybe we need a, a meeting that we can put people that own properties and people and sit down and maybe hash out a few things, and maybe everybody that way can work together. I don't know. But I'm just telling you, I was a little disappointed, because I really thought that that's what was gonna be without 5:30. So that's it, I'm not gonna say anything else. Everybody have a great day tomorrow.
Any other comments tonight?
I think we've pretty well beaten this to death, but let me just say, what concerns me is, is that we all want, we all want this town to succeed, I believe that's why we're all here, there's no doubt about that. But not one ordinance or one thing's gonna change or something. I think this ordinance is, as I said to you before, feel-good legislation. Who's gonna do it? We gotta get the manpower. As far as having different ideas, I think that's always good to have different viewpoints. If everybody thinks the same, how are we ever gonna go forward? They have to have some dissension between them. Otherwise, what's the point of having five people? Might as well have one, right? Just appoint somebody, let him run the place. It doesn't work that way, this is America. Part of this is, you're gonna tell me what to do with my building, it's my building. Now, if, if there's a fire hazard or a safety hazard, you already have the things on the book post, you already have that one there. There's plenty of ordinances out there, there are plenty of people to take care of. I wash my windows several times a week. I opened up another business in downtown Sunbury very recently. I take pride in my business, I know a lot of people in this town do. There's not one little silver bullet here that's gonna fix this, and you gotta get that out of your head. That's just not gonna happen, and it's not their fault. I've been on council, I've spent my time there. It is not, Mark?
It's not easy.
It's not easy, right? We've all been there. So I'm not saying give up, I'm saying, work together like we're doing it, but don't blame these people, and don't think one silver bullet is gonna change this, 'cause it's not. It's just not. So let's not blame this group, let's move forward, this legislation, to me, it isn't there yet, you know? It, it just isn't there. But that, that's what I wanna say. But we all want the same thing.
John Schubman from Sunbury. I'd just like to give a few words of wisdom. Governing is the art of the doable. In order to be doable, there has to be some agreement. One person or two people can't stand and say, this is the way it has to be, and I won't accept anything else. And so I encourage all of you to be willing to look at this piece of legislation, I don't think anybody disagrees with the fact that vacant buildings are a problem, I don't think anybody disagrees that there's things that we need to do to try to correct the problem. I've heard a couple of good suggestions, things that I think are common sense tonight, I would urge council to consider those, and the mayor to consider those. But you need to talk to each other, because governing is the art of the doable, and we don't always get our own way. For those of you that have had any experience in any kind of an organization, you know that it's not your way, that you have to give and take to make it work. So I encourage you, let's have a little give and take and make it work.
Just wanna reiterate on what Bob said about, you felt totally right on that, but one thing is being missed here, is that we, we don't have a tax base, I mean, our industry and everything has dropped out of here, so we lost a lot, so we don't have the money to pay for manpower, for code office, for the police department, everything else. And I think somebody should be working on why we shouldn't be getting some other industry in here to boost that up. It seemed like it always goes up for taxes for the people and raise residential taxes, but we can't, we can't do that, and we lost all the business in this area. So I think that should be worked on as one of the priorities, because that'll take care of the rest of it too, it'll, it'd be able to have more manpower, for police department, for code office, and, and just in general. Okay?
Any more comments tonight? All right, thank you all for your involvement, this meeting is now adjourned, thank you.